All right, we're doing it again. Glad you guys are back. Good morning, everyone. How are we doing this morning? I know it's not morning for everyone, right, James? It's evening for you?
For me, it's the afternoon.
Afternoon, all right. Well, while I got you, how are you doing this morning?
Yeah, good.
Good, good, good. All right, well, while we're popping in, I would love to hear from anyone who has something to share. I know we're day three, so you've had a little bit of time to process. I know it's still a short amount of time. We've recognized awareness as phase one and then further revelation out of that. So anyone who wants to kick us off? The pause. All right, I'm gonna call on someone then, because I know her well. Tara, I know you are a deep processor and you always got revelation brewing. What's been the last couple of days for you?
Yeah, I was trying to grab my thoughts. You know what? I think, I think for me, one of the things that, one of the thing that that has hit me really hard in a good way is how the three, the three ways that how does the enemy try to victimize us, right? And it, it's like, when you hear the way that it was explained, like, who I was in the past, and then what I did in the past, and then what I can't do in the present, that piece for me, when I, when I heard it, I'm like, oh, of course. And I'm like, how did I not think of that? And so I think just the revelation of how helpful that framework is for when, when emotions come that, one, you're not expecting, and two, you're like, okay, I don't like this. I don't like this feeling. But, but it's familiar, but it always, it always takes, it always takes you to a place that that doesn't feel good. And I realize the more, the more you get healed, the more those emotions don't feel good anymore. Whereas in the past, they were familiar and predictable. And so it's easy to fall and just go with the flow. But now it's like the revelation of the truth that that, that that is a way that the enemy comes at us. Then I'm like, okay, good. I guess would Robbie say, it's expiration date time, right? Like, we're done with that. So I just thought that was a really helpful way to see it and a super helpful way to help other people see that and not, and help them get unstuck from, from that. So that was a really powerful framework that I heard that was stellar. Loved it, for sure.
Yeah, super. No, I love that. That's a good one. Yeah, that, that, that was in the second session, actually. Robbie went into that. So you can check that out there. But how do we recognize the enemy's coming at us is what she was talking about. And there was three different ways he went into. And recognizing that that is the ultimate spiritual warfare. I think that's been one of the shifts that I've had in, in working with Robbie is sometimes we like to see the out there things and try to label them. But if we can just manage this, everything else is taken care of. So that's a huge shift, recognizing I have control over one thing, and that's myself, my responses, my reactions, my thoughts. And if I can guard my heart in that area and, and shift my responses to align with kingdom purposes, the other things don't even matter. So that's a huge shift because now I'm not looking outside to what, what's happening. I don't have to have the awareness of the enemy's plans. His one plan is against me. If I can manage this thing, everything else is taken care of. So that's, that's a beautiful revelation and it is, it's helpful to be able to put language to it. And Robbie did a good job with that. Anyone else? Penny?
I, yeah, I was, when I listened to the, to Robbie's interview that you did with him, he said something in that that was really pertinent for this whole thing. And I've been thinking about it, but he was talking about, of course, hearing God, hearing the Holy Spirit. And, and, and you kept delving into that more and more and he, and asking him, what's he mean? What's he mean? And then he got to the point where he said, there's two voice, there's two parts to hearing the Holy Spirit. There's two parts to the voice. There's hearing the voice of his instructions, and there's hearing the voice of his healing. And he was talking about, if you don't hear the voice of his instructions, you're lost. But if you don't hear the voice of his healing, you're destroyed. And so I thought that's very interesting. And so that really led me to pray for James and, and, you know, the, I believe James in Australia, you know, for his healings and what, healing and what have you. But, but it just shows you how important it is what Robbie is trying to get across a much deeper level of healing. And yet it's much more, it's much easier, like what Tara brought up, you're speaking about, if we can just get a hold of those three things, then you don't have to think about going through some deliverance sessions for years or therapy sessions for years or what have you. But if you can get a hold of this in your spirit, then that's the voice of healing, right? That, that heals you and, and doesn't allow you to be destroyed. So I appreciate what Tara said, and I just kind of piggyback off of that. And then I thought yesterday that Charles was absolutely precious, you know, talking about his mom and how he approached her and just his heart. So I've been praying for Charles and, and but anyway, I've really been thinking about, about those two voices.
I know that's beautiful. And I feel like this might be a good time to mention this because we have a, we have a community that meets on Tuesday mornings called Nurturing Wisdom. We meet every Tuesday from nine thirty to eleven and Tara and Penny are kind of part of the OGs, the originals in the, in the nurturing wisdom. And you can see how they process the revelation. And there is a beautiful aspect of being able to do this in community. And as you've noted, Penny is a true intercessor. And it's just really valuable to be a part of a community that, one, gets where you're at, right? Like, we're going after the, the deep part of God's heart and learning how to not just have knowledge or information, but how do I take that information and bring it inside? So it's in my mind, it's in my heart, it's in my thoughts, in my behaviors, in my responses, right? Like, that's a deeper level of responding to Christ. And I think in our journey with life, it gives us a lot of this. We get, we get those highs, we get the fun experiences. But one, one of the things that has become more revelatory in my understanding of our Christian journey is it's fundamental that we restore trust to ourselves and God. And that looks like something. Walking that journey out is really practical, right? Because we're confronted with our experiences and, and the things that respond out of that. So having a community that can share experiences like, hey, here's the high. And also the reality of, you know, you look at biblically, I think sometimes we get these ideas in our mind that, oh, when I mature, it'll look like this. Or it'll look easier. But the truth is, you look at Joshua and taking the promised land. That was the ultimate, right? Taking the promised land, but it didn't come without a battle. So we're in this place where we're constantly growing and growth looks like something. And we don't always like what growth feels like. We want the outcome of it, but the process of growth, we need encouragement in that process. And so I would just, just mention this because it is a place that I want to invite you guys into joining the nurturing wisdom community because it's a lot like this. And we all need those boosts of encouragement and we're, we are part of a family, right? So I just want to make mention of that, that it is, it's a fun place to join in. So and I know we have some more insights and testimonies and we want to hear them. So go ahead, Charles. Oh, can't hear you.
Hello? Hello? Can you hear?
Good now.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're good.
How can I get into the nurturing wisdom group?
Yeah, I'll get you guys the link. I'll, I'll drop that in the chat and then I'll also send a follow up email so you guys can, can participate in.
Okay.
We'd love to have, go, go India. That's where Charles is from. And I've had the pleasure of going there several times to do ministry. We met many years ago now, maybe long back. And it's just fun.
Long, long back.
Yeah, long back. It's fun when we get to our family in Christ.
Yeah, in fact, when, when you came to Bethel House with Diane and you prayed over grace and myself and Ruby was there, I think, that was a very powerful experience for us to, to begin to, really begin to walk in this, the Holy Spirit and close communication with him. That was, that was, yeah, it was a start of something. It was the start of something.
Yeah, I love it. I love it. Yeah. And that's kind of our DNA, my DNA, Robbie, our heart is for the nations and missions. And the Lord has, has us planted in Atlanta, Georgia. We started a church here, but we're still for the nations. And this is a fun platform because Zoom has made it possible to bring all those things together. So we love particularly India, as you guys know, but, but the nations. So I will definitely get you guys that link and, and hope that.
And can I ask some of the others of our group like Ruby and all, you know, I'll ask them if they want to join. I could pass the link to them. Is it okay?
That would be wonderful.
Yeah. All right. Yeah. Thanks. Thanks.
Before we dive into the teaching, anyone else have experiences from this, this challenge that has brought healing, revelation? Maybe you recognize something different in how you're responding to people. Just wanted to acknowledge fruit from this challenge. Go ahead, Corey. Scott, you're next.
Yeah. Yesterday Robbie had said, change, change how you feel. I mean, it was just a simple word, but as I thought about that, like, I mean, it just hit me. It was revelation hit me and I was immediately able to just change how I felt. And yeah, it was just that simple. Throughout the day, I noticed that it tried to pull me back. And so I, you know, I just took a break and then there was a moment where the Lord was speaking, spoke to me and just said, reset, you know? And another word that Robbie had given came to my mind again. He said, fools return to, you know, full repeats, wise resets. And so, so when I realized that, I was like, oh, I don't need to keep repeating laying down here and trying to receive rest. I can just walk and rest now just by acknowledging it. So I got up and used the time to go to the gym instead of waste time and not, you know, be, be sleeping or, you know, resting in that way. Because I thought, I'm not really building anything here. I just keep staying here all day, you know? Like, I need to go, I want to go do something and share with somebody. So I got up and, and went and you know, the whole thing of changing my feelings, reset, reset back to peace, joy, love. Yeah, that was just awesome for me yesterday. And then, and then afterwards, again, keeping in mind the reset on peace, joy, love. It was a constant, like going back to that, but it became more and more fluid, where it was less going back, less, I don't know how to say it. It's just, it became more in my sight. And then the word that he gave about compassion, inspiration, trust. It was helping me to respond and have more of a foundation to people so that it, when I'm around people, whatever would happen wouldn't cause me to go back to have to reset again, if that makes sense. And so yeah, my, my feelings just are changed. That's just a simple testimony. But when he's given these like, one, two, three points, like my, my heart has been able to really grasp and hold on to those. In those moments, they come back to my mind. And so I really feel, I woke up this morning, really felt refreshed. I felt the Lord just reminded me even through scripture that it is the mind of Christ. Then, so like my perspective on seeing my dad, my perspective on seeing the dog even, you know, it's changed. It's like, I'm not seeing other things. I'm seeing what God, his purpose for them, you know? Does that make sense? So, yeah, I hope that, and that was just, that's where I'm at. Yeah. So.
Yeah, that's great. And I love that revelation. You share a lot of revelation, but the one that rest doesn't, sometimes it does look like resting, but rest is a different space in doing things, right? We can, we're, we're called to advance the kingdom and we do it from the place of rest, not striving, but it looks like something still. So that was, that was a good revelation. Scott, I'll come to you next, Adam.
Yeah, real quick, I just wanted to say just how grateful I am to have found and discovered this as a resource, just in a world that's full of just self-help and information and data. You know, I've been kind of lost in like a snowstorm of just self-help, knowing that there wasn't, it, it just always didn't feel good to me and great. So to have found something that's got spirit life in it that can affect real change from the inside out through Christ and not something that I'm having to just through effort and, you know, self-whatever plow through. So anyways, just wanted to put that out there that I'm really grateful to have something I can continue to care for, carry forward as well as share with others.
Amen. Well, we're grateful you found us. I think we've, we're, we've been in a space. I feel like the Lord's cocooned us. And we're grateful that we're, we're making the way for others to be able to join in and experience this. And so we're, we're excited to see where this goes and continue to invest. So I'm grateful to hear that was, it's been valuable for you guys. Adam?
Morning, everyone. Yesterday, one of the things that, that hit me really powerfully as I was reading the notes again, is the teaching about the five senses, you know, that Robbie was going into. And I, I just felt the power of that. The five senses is the search engine to hear what I need and what God has already said. And, you know, as, as we bring in the spirit into our lives and feel the nine emotions that you outlined, all the fruits of the spirit is training the five senses to like overcome all the issues in our lives, you know? And it's like when you meditating on the thoughts of God, your five senses are getting trained to release the emotions of thoughts and replace spirit of fear with inspiration. I just, they, I, I felt the truth of that when, when you feel the inspiration come to us, it like enlivens all the senses. It's, it's beautiful. So and yeah, I would just echo saying, you know, the Tuesday group is, is a powerful way to just keep, keep momentum, the spiritual momentum in life.
Yeah, Adam, Adam joined us actually from the last hard reset. So it's, it's kind of cool. When, when full circle, he's, he's still hanging with us, which we love it. Yeah, it, to what he was just saying, I think, like, as you were talking, it just, you know, Robbie's given this concept and I've had a bit longer to process it, but we feel, we feel frustration and our automatic response is we want to get rid of it, right? Like, we push it away. Or we have negative senses and we want to push it away. But like how you're describing it, it's how do we find harmony in that? Oh, God's actually, instead of rejecting it, we can process it differently. Oh, wait, God wants to speak. How do I process this frustration to go through it rather than pushing it away? Because ultimately, you still have to go through it. So I like, I like the way you describe that because I think what you're putting language to finding harmony in frustration. Oh, God's in this. God wants to take me through this. Instead of fighting it, it's a way to quicken and activate that healing process to come to the other side. So it was, it was good language to that. BJ?
Hey, how are you guys? I just want to say that the first day, I kind of thought, okay, I think my emotions are pretty good. I'm not angry person, you know, I'm pretty disciplined. And all of a sudden, the Lord just opened this door that I didn't even know was there. And, and it's not my interaction with other people. It's something that's just personal thing. You know, it's not like my response to somebody else. It's response to me. And so I just can't, I mean, I haven't got the full revelation of it. Obviously, the Lord's shown me what, what the problem is, you know, and I'm not exactly sure how, where, where it came from or what started it, you know, like in my early childhood or something. I'm not even sure that's, that's important, you know? It's just overcoming it. And I'm, I'm pretty excited about it because I'm already, and, and you know, when it came, Brother Robbie, it came when I was just practicing the presence of the Lord. You know, it came when I was just, and my problem with me is whenever I feel the anointing coming, I always want to worship because I'm a worshiper. So I'm always babbling and praising and thanking, and I'm not just sitting there and receiving. And so that's what I tried, you know, when the presence of a Lord came, I just sat there and let those waves roll over me. And oh my goodness, you know, that's when that revelation came and I didn't even see that coming. And, you know, maybe later we can learn more about this. I can, I'm gonna share in this victory. But it's just, it's amazing. It's that one thing in my life that just never has been dealt with, you know? So I'm excited about this reset.
Come on. Oh, I, I love what you shared and how you shared it. Because like it is, that's the opposite of the self-help, right? Because in self-help, you know, that topic, we, we want to find out what the root is and then, and then deal with it in the straightforward way. But exactly what you described is God's agenda. It doesn't matter because when I go after his presence, he shines a light on the dark spot and heals it. And sometimes he shows what the source is, sometimes he doesn't. And like you said, doesn't matter. If I'm healed, it really doesn't matter because the goal is my focus is to him. It's his presence that shines a light. And that's what this whole process is about, right? Robbie brings in language and describes it, but that is what we're all about. How do I connect? How do we connect more to God? So he speaks to us. And that's the light coming in. And sometimes we need other people to help us bring that light in. But that is absolutely beautiful. And I'm looking forward to meeting you in person. BJ is coming down for our event we're doing. And if anyone is local or wants to fly in, you're more than welcome. We've started up a church here about two years ago. We're real small, kind of unique. It's called Radical Believers Chapel. We're here in Lawrenceville, Georgia. And we have an event on the thirteenth and fourteenth called The Science of the Holy Spirit. So we're, we're going in some of these topics, we're talking here, but much deeper in two days' time. And you're gonna love it, BJ. And I'm looking forward to hanging with you those two days. So, yeah, anyone else before we dive in? Our, oh, yeah, go ahead, Matthew.
Is that okay? Oh, can you agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi. No, I, I think to me, this is amazing. Like, I was searching for, like, I, sometimes I'm not very good at words, but more. I remember like Robbie came to my home church years ago with the pastor John Peepo at Redeemer in Monroe. And I was just scrolling through and, and I, this kept coming up and coming up. And I was like, I'm going to, I've never done anything like this before. This is my first time like doing anything like this in my life. But, yeah, I, I was, I remember like the movie. I was part of that church with Gary Wilson and things like that. And I, I just, I want to go deeper, but the things that he was speaking about with like science and all of these things, like I've been searching this myself. And this is like, I was like mind blown. Like the past three days is like, there are other people or that are thinking about these things. I don't know. Sometimes you feel like out there and you don't say anything. But I, I don't know how to put it, but I was like, I couldn't stop thinking about it. Like, I work all night and I haven't gone to sleep, but I, I'm still thinking about it. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Glad you found us. So good.
Yeah, me too. Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll transition here. I'm just gonna pray real quick and then we'll give it over Robbie. Father, I just thank you. I love seeing your people get touched by you. And I love how we have an extension of our family all over the world. And we just thank you. We praise you for how you are connecting us deeper into who you are, your revelation, your truth. And I thank you. The fruit of that is always transformation. The fruit of that is always kingdom advancement. And so we say thank you. Thank you for inviting us into this journey with you to go deep with you. And we just ask this morning, as Robbie teaches, that you would open up our hearts, our spirits to receive even more, that we give you permission to redo, to unlearn the things that, that we've learned that are not your foundation. And we just invite you in this morning and we ask that your anointing would rest on Robbie as he shares this morning. Who blessed you, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen, guys. Amen. That, that, that is thank you. Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Sharing helps you to, to not just retain, but affirm. Do you hear that? Sharing not only helps you retain, it affirms. It becomes your foundation when you share. And so it's good, good, because testimony is, is a repetition of, repetition of more. Come on. Again, when daddy, when dad speaks, he makes me think. So i- if, when the Lord says, he makes you think. So I, I, I'm here. I'm here, the product of almost from three o'clock to six o'clock is a product of thinking for you. So you gotta suffer with me, if you don't mind. So anyways, so I'm happy. I'm happy y'all are here and it's, it's a joy, guys. It's a joy. Where, where two or three are in, in his name, we are, we are reaping, we are reaping the presence of his, we are reaping, we are reaping his thoughts in our lives. So meaning wherever he is, there is change. Amen? Wherever the presence of God is, there is change. He won't show up unless he change, unless he changes me. I don't want him to show up if he's not changing me. There's an expectation. The Lord shows up to change. He's not, he's not a boarding God. He never, he's never bored. Why? He constantly changing things so that I can constantly grow into new places. Amen? Change is going into new places. Agreed? Come on. Change is growing into, going into new arena and new people, a, a, a new season, a new, new, new government, new habits, new things. So change is necessary. If I'm not changing, I'm not getting into new season. Change forces you to get into new season. Amen? So that's why, that's why the Lord is, the Lord is faithful to us to keep us growing to new places. When Jesus said, that's, that's a good point of, there's a story that Jesus said to his disciples. He said, he talked about a parable of, he picked three servants. And he gave three, three, three different, come on, three different talents, three amount of talents. I'll shock you here in a minute. Stay with me. Okay? Three different talents. He gave one person five thousand, five, like five talents, five hundred, five thousand, what are that? Gold coins. Number two, he gave two thousand gold coins. To one person, he gave one thousand coins. I'll say this out loud. I'll, I'll offend you. Can I offend you today? Yeah? Is it okay? James, are you okay? Kissing her? If it's okay, I'll offend you. Yeah? Okay. Good job. Good job. When God gives you one, he's saying, I cannot trust you. When God gives you two or more, he says, I can trust you. Think with me, Scott. When God gives you one arena, he says one thing. He says, I, I trust you, but I'm giving you an opportunity. I'm giving you opportunity. I trust you, but I'm giving you opportunity. Here, these two, he's not giving them opportunity. He is giving them authority. Did you hear that? There's a difference between opportunity and authority. Someone is, someone is getting hooked up with the Holy Spirit right now. Either you are seeing, seeing me from the deer in the ice, you know, that proverb Americans have? Deer in the ice, that eyes in the deer. What do that word is? Yeah? So I want, I want some response. Come on. I,
Deer in headlights.
There you go, bro. Deer in the headlights. It's like the deer that's, I love deers here in America. They just come in the middle of the road. They watch you. They do nothing. They just watch you, you know? But so give me some response, guys. Give me some response. Amen? So the point is, when God chooses, when God gave these, when God gave these three people, he gave an opportunity. he gave an opportunity, but he also gave them authority. Come on. When God gives you, he gives you authority. But when you don't trust it, we use it as an opportunity. So what that's saying is, what that did is, so, so when, so how did he, how did he, how did he bring? What's the process? Here's the thing. The reason he's sharing the, is the reason he shared the parable is because he said, "If I were in the servant's shoes, what would I, what would I have done?" If the master was in the servant's shoes, what would master would have done? What would, what, what master would have, what master could have done is a space where the master put him there. So here's the point. Here's the point. So when, when, before the master gave these three, three different talents, three different levels of faith, come on, three different levels of faith, the first thing he did is, he brought them outside, outside, outside the, outside the thought process of being a servant to a stewardship. He picked them up from being, from following something that they keep doing the same thing again and again with accountability, with, with a sense of, with a sense of, with a sense of being watched to being responsible. So he took them out from where they were for being a servant to a steward. Okay? A steward, a steward's responsibility was to take what's been given to them, not only res, not only respond for what has been given to them, but produce what has been given to them. Amen? You're not repeating it, you're producing it. You're repeating here, but you're producing here. Come on. You need to start with the repetition. But if the repetition is not producing, you are, you are, come on, abusing the process. Abuse is not being productive. Stopping the production. Come on. Abuses you not going anywhere. When you don't grow, you're abusing you. When enemy abuses you, why is he abused? He abuses you for you to not to grow in your gift. Come on, guys. Abuses, stopping, he's stopping you not to, come on, identify the power and authority of what you carry into new places the God has assigned you to go. That means, when, when, when you are producing, you will know your freedom. I know, I, I know, I know, I know, I know. Think with him, please. Think with him, please. So, the point is, repetition is important. You are, you making something, you, you, you loving on something is important. But if you, if you're not, come on, if you're, if you're not restructuring, I mean, if you're not living out of what, what you need to multiply, what God is saying, what God is doing is, he is testing you to see how you're producing so you can become a leader where you would be, you would start a revolution by what you're producing. Come on. If you don't produce, you're not creating, come on, you're not creating a, an, you're not creating a place of trust. Produce, when you reproduce something, you're not, you're creating a place for trust so that things can follow you. Trust will always create discipleship. Trust will always create a movement. Come on, guys. Uh, make it sense? If you, if you're not producing, you're not creating discipleship. So, produce is becoming strong and courageous. Amen. Good job. Producing is becoming strong. Becoming strong. Wha- what is becoming strong? Becoming strong and courageous is between, come on, is between what? Oh, come on, it's, it's, this is beautiful. Produce and courage is between who trusts you, who trusts you to where you're going. So, in other words, in other word, God wants me to produce consistently. So how, how in the world am I producing? The way I produce is to know that I'm no more a servant to something, to something that holds me to my past. Any emotion that, that makes me feel, that makes me feel stuck, that makes me feel, that makes me feel immature, that makes me feel trust, un, I mean, not trustworthy, is you producing your past. Do you hear that? You, you carrying who you were before. You're repeating who you were before. That means, that means what God is saying is, the Lord doesn't want me to carry what I was to where I am. So, being a servant is, is repeating what I did yesterday. It's good. It's good. But it's when you repeat and you don't find revelation, you're servant to it. You need disciplines. Disciplines is important. Disciplines should give you, give you the power to do more than do less. If your discipline is not doing more, you're not doing, you're not doing it right. Amen? Your disciplines should make you do more, should, should make you look for more. It should make you look to learn more, read more, listen more, find more. Come on. So, being strong and courageous is becoming more than what you were. Uh, write that down, guys. Come on. Becoming more is becoming, becoming more in the place of being strong and courageous. You're strong and courageous if you, if you go to what you already know, it's not being strong and courageous. Ooh. I don't know anybody is liking this teaching or not, but Tammy's liking it. Amen. I make it sense to you all. So, here's my, here's my five principles of to, to get to be in the more place where I become trustworthy. I become trustworthy for God. When God trusts me, he'll always give me more. If you're not happy with more, you gotta, you, you gotta unlearn what's stopping you to not to get more. When you stop, that means when you don't want more, you become, you're, you're, you're meditating on a lie that, that makes you feel insecure. Do you hear that? Meditation of not wanting more is the meditation of insecurity. You're securing, you're, you're getting secure to a wrong, you're positioning in the wrong place. Insecurity is positioning in your wrong place. In the wrong presence. Come on. Insecurity is positioning the wrong presence. When you know, if you know you're getting secure in the wrong presence, it's better to live out of right presence. Amen? So, so, your lie to not to do more is insecurity. The presence to do more is faithfulness. Amen? The presence to do more is trust. Come on. The presence to do more is trust. People don't trust you just because they trust you. They trust you because you know more than what they know. You can lead them to more places than what they, what they, what, where they were, they were, where they were. I make it sense? People trust you because you can take people to more places, to places where they don't know. When God trusts you, he's saying, you would take him places where, places where, come on, God already knows, but he's not have, he doesn't have your experience. I'm gonna shock you here. God knows your plans, but he does not have your experience. That's called obedience. Obedience fulfills his desire. That's called, that's called, tha- that's called obedience. That means, that's called trust. Trust, trust helps you finish the God, God's plan of his presence and his trust. Amen? So, 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 he knows it, but he does not have the experience. He trusts you. But he, he trusts, when he, he knows you, but he doesn't trust you. The, come on, he knows you, but he doesn't trust you. The only way he trusts you is you become obedient. He knows you, but he can't trust you. He knows your plans, but unless you become obedient, he'll trust you. I make it sense to you all. Am I too much today? I, I know, this is my last day, so I'm giving you too much. Come on. So, 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 so the point is, the point is, when Jesus, when God said to Abraham, "Abraham, I want you to give me your son. Sacrifice me your son." What did he do? He, Abraham took his son to the mountain that God called him to, to give, to give the son to sacrifice. Before Abraham was about to kill and sacrifice his son, he said, "Abraham, stop it right there. Now I know, Abraham, now I know." Stick, my, my friend, I know now how, how, how awesome you are, how grateful you are. You're willing to give up my promise to you. You're willing, if you're willing to give up my promise in my obedience, now I know I can trust you. I love you. But unless are you, unless you put your place to obedience, I won't trust you. Trust happens in obedience, but it always starts with presence. Amen? Where is Taylor? Tay- Taylor, Taylor, T Y L E R. Is he here? I don't see him. Okay. Um, anyways.
He's there.
He's there. Okay, good. Okay, that's, that's for Taylor, if he's here. Nana. Your, your presence, the presence is, the, the five principles I want to, I want to talk about is today is, is the five principles that, that you, you, you live every day without you knowing is your thoughts creates emotions. Your emotions creates attitude. Sorry, yeah, attitude. Your attitude creates belief. Your belief creates perception. Do you hear that? Your thoughts, your thoughts creates, your thoughts creates power. Emotions are power. E-motion. E-motion. Power in motion. Your emotion is the representative of a thought. What, your trauma is a thought. But what rules the trauma is an emotion. Agreed? Panic is a thought, is a, is an emotion. But ruled by a thought. You change, you, you, the, the, the psychology says, change the thought, you change emotion. What daddy says is, change your emotion, you force a thought. Elevate your emotion. You change a thought. Amen? It always starts with a thought. But it leads you, it, it produces an emotion. Then emotion, and then, that means, these two, are you ready? These two are state of being. The, the, the presence of who you are. It's a presence of who you are. It's the life you're living. Uh, life, L-I-F-E, life, your life that you're living. A thought, and then? A thought and emotion. It's a life. It's a life that you're living. When you live out of emotion, you're living out of a thought. It's, which is creating a life that you, that, that, that is produced by an emotion. It's, which is creating a life that you, that, that, that is produced by an emotion. I make it sense to y'all? So whatever you produce, you're relating. So when you repeat any, when you repeat any of these two, you're earning life. Whatever was good or bad, life is, life is your living, a living place, right? A living state, a, a living, you're creating a space for, for the life to fit. You're fitting something. Come on, you're fitting what you're producing. You're, 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 you're releasing something. You're releasing something. When you, when you're releasing something, you are repeating that what you're releasing. Or you're releasing a culture, you're releasing a memory. Think with me, please. Where there is a thought, there is an emotion. Where there is an emotion, there's a memory. Remember that, the first day? Wherever there is emotional reaction, man, you still remember it today. How many of you remember what happened to you at your childhood days? One event. Yes? Everybody. I remember, I remember, I, 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 I was bitten by my dog. And I was not, although I don't remember that I was bitten by my dog, I remember how my father accused me. My, my, I, I, I remember how my, my dad had to scold me to say, why did you go to, why did you go to the dark? Like, I didn't go, it came. I remember how he accused. So my emotions, the, the dark did not create it. What I felt from what happened there, what was remembered. So your emotion is your memory. So remember, whatever you feel, you're remembering it. Whatever you're remembering it, you're repeating it. Are you ready to hear this? You're seventy percent, there are seventy thousand thoughts in the day. Seven, you remember seven, you, 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 you think seventy thousand of thoughts per day. Are you ready to hear this? Sixty thousand of those thoughts, you're repeating it. Wow. Sixty thousand thoughts are repeated from yesterday. It's only through your emotion. Your emotion creates, it gathers all these thoughts of yours today. Okay? So when you repeat these, you're establishing a perception. A perception. Sorry, uh, sorry, 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 attitude, I'm sorry, attitude. You're, you're establishing an attitude. Your attitude, what did God say? He said something amazing. Your attitude is a, a learned predisposition to respond, to respond to a particular object and a person. Wow. Attitude is a learnt predisposition. I don't know what that English means. Predisposition. Learned, pre, what is, what is disposition, sir? Anybody?
It's like, um, a predisposition means you're, the likelihood of you agreeing with something or disagreeing with something.
Yeah.
I, I think, right, yeah.
Yeah, it, it is, uh, premeditated.
Yeah.
Right? It is, I, I, I wrote down here, learnt predisposition to respond. It's, it, to respond in a certain way to an object or a person. Your attitude is premeditated. Isn't that crazy? Premeditated personality. Oh, he has an attitude towards this. I have an atti- bad attitude to this, to this day. Oh, I have a bad attitude to this person. I have a good attitude today morning. Come on. No, you're not getting this. When you come to it, to, when you come into your home, your, your wife or your husband is saying, she has a good attitude today. What, what happened to you? The, you have, you carry an attitude of love. Attitude is, is not bad, it's good. It is, it's predispositioning someone else to accept us, to feel us, to experience us, experience us. So that means, where did that come from? It came from your thoughts and emotion. Okay? So, uh, uh, that I'll go faster because I'm, I'm in two minutes. Um, uh, that attitude, that attitude creates a belief. Your belief is conviction. That conviction is your map. Come on. That conviction, that belief leads you to perception, perception, perception. Are you ready to hear this? Perception is becoming familiar to something. Amen? Perception is becoming familiar. All right. Here's, here's the, here's the, uh, the, 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 I call it as curve ball. Are you ready to hear the curve ball? The curve ball, the curve ball is the ball you never expected the way it comes in a, in a baseball, is that right? I, I know this famous baseball guy who plays with, uh, some, some crazy guy. Uh, he's, he's, man, the baseball people earn good money. Um, uh, so he, he, he said, Ravi, I'm, so I said, what are you good at? He said, I'm a pi- good pitcher, but I know how to curve the ball. And when he curves the ball, people don't expect. How, they, they expect the ball is coming this way, suddenly the ball moves this way. So the curve ball today is, your perception is familiarizing. Are you ready? Ready to hear this? Your perception can come in the framework of your meditation. Meditation is you're becoming familiar to something. You're becoming familiar to the unknown. Amen? What, what you meditate is becoming, you becoming familiar. So here's a chance for you guys. My challenge for you today is when you start your thought to an emotion, it, and you end up to a perception, what connects your perception to your, to, to your thought is you're becoming familiar. God said, God said to Mo- God said to Joshua, Joshua, for you to get to know, for you to get to know, are you ready to hear this, guys? You wanna hear this? For you to get to know my ways, meditate. He told this to Joshua and to Moses. If, God, Moses said, Lord, teach me your ways. So that, so that I can do things in a right way. So, so then he, then he spoke, then the Lord speaks to Joshua. For you to get to do everything right, if, for you to get to know my ways, is meditate me. Meditation is not new age terminology. Meditation was stolen. Was stolen by new age when it is not used by Christianity. What we didn't use, the enemy is using it. Come on. When we know, when we know it's time to use, the enemy has nothing, has no choice but to give up. Amen? So I, I've seen it again and again, guys. Meditation is getting familiar to more things. So to me, change happens through not practice. Change happens through meditation. That's my curve ball. Whatever you meditate, you're seeing what you don't know. Amen? You're knowing what you don't know. Think with me, please. Please, please think with me. Change happens when you meditate. Meditation helps you to see more, learn more, find more. So the point for change i- is comes in the framework of meditation. Meditation, meditating what? Meditating, meditating the, the words of God. In new age, what they say is, met, empty yourself, that means come empty. Come empty yourself so that you can be full. What Jesus says is, no, fill me first. Fill me with your word, fill me with my words. Come with what? Thanksgiving. What is Thanksgiving? Thanksgiving, come to, come to with Thanksgiving, come to the gates, come, come into the gates with Thanksgiving. Come on. Thanksgiving is me filling myself with gratitude, filling with his words of gratitude. Filling, filling me with the presence of his. When I, when I bring myself with myself, with God's, God's self, he, he, he's giving you, is giving you secrets that you don't know. So here's my, here's what I noticed, Nana. Every time you meditate, you're not shocked. This is crazy because, because meditation helps you, are you ready? Meditation is, meditation is rehearsing, rehearsing his plans before you, before you get into the plans. Rehearsing is giving you rehearse, is rehearsing his plans in your life. Amen? So that you would, you would not be distracted by the enemy's struggles, enemy's attacks. Meditation is rehearsing, rehearsing everything that you need to walk in a day. That's all you need to know. You're practicing the plans of God. Amen? You're establishing the plans of God. Meditation is you're becoming, you're becoming strong and courageous. Meditation is you're letting go your fear and discouragement. Don't be afraid, nor dismayed. Joshua one eight, right? Be courageous, be strong and courageous, but the, the, what, what makes you being strong and courageous is, is taking away fear and discouragement, dismayed. Amen? So, uh, I want to challenge with this. Every, when do, Ravi, when do I meditate? The, the time that I meditate is in the night. Your day starts in the night. Start meditation, put your meditation in the day, in, in the night. Why? You are, the reason you're meditating in the night is for God, that's the time it starts. Amen? So when you meditate the promises of God in the night, he's healing what is, what, what, it's healing what you don't know. He's giving you resolutions to what you don't know. He's healing all your trauma that are stuck in the brain. Amen? All right. I know I'm already out. Jackie, you had a, uh, you, you had a question?
Oh, no, I just a thought related to what you're talking about because you talked about life is thoughts and emotion. And then you talked about meditation being the thing that shifted. So I just, um, I don't, I don't know that it's talked about a lot on meditation, but I think what came to mind when you were talking about the meditation is the power of, cause we know that we're supposed to read the word of God. But unless I put emotions to the thoughts in the word of God, it's not a med- it's not a true meditation. So it just like came to mind, like what is meditation? But I think when I, when I have a thought of God, it's empowering new emotions to those thoughts, uh, which is just, uh, just to deepen the thought of what is true meditation.
Amen. Amen, it's good. It's, uh, it's repeating, it's repeating for more, right? Your, your, uh, meditation is, you're trusting, you've, you've been getting, getting trusted. You're rehearsing. You're rehearsing things that God has for you. So, all right. Any questions, y'all? Any questions today? Any questions? I don't want you to leave without any questions. Any questions? Good night? Wait, Nana, I'm gonna ask you a question in the next, next, next class, just a minute. Stay. Okay. Uh, uh, maybe ask me, ask me a question, actually, Nana. Ask, it's a good question, actually.
Okay. You said that when you start meditation, that you, um, fill God with, uh, thanksgiving and praise, praise and thanksgiving, and then he fills you. You always start meditation with praise and thanksgiving?
Yes. Well, well, um, well, the praise and thanksgiving comes with revelation.
Comes with the revelation.
I, I read the word.
Uh huh.
I don't come, I don't, I, I don't start with thanks, uh, I don't thanks with, I don't start with, um, gratefulness. I start with to find something that I can be grateful.
So you just pick up the Bible, like, okay, I'm, it's, uh, I'm gonna read, I'm just gonna read. I don't start praising or thanking yet. I just pick it up and I start reading it.
Because he said, read this word first. He said, let this word be in your mouth. This is the, this is the gate for him to talk to me.
Okay.
It is the presence to talk to me. My gratitude is the language of my past.
Can you explain that?
Gratitude is saying, oh, I'm grateful for the car, I'm grateful for this, I'm grateful for that, I'm grateful for your presence, I'm grateful for this. You, you're still connecting to, to you. What, what you experience. I want, I, I, when I go to his experience, what he did to people, like dude, how did you do that, Jesus? God, how did you do that to Moses? How did you do that to Deborah? How did you do that to Elijah? That is amazing.
Okay.
I'm putting myself in a person's life.
So it's not about you, it's about him, that your thankfulness is about what he did, what you're, what you're reading in the Bible, what the revelation.
Yes, what you, what, what he did, because you're, you should be awe. You should find awe, the more you, you, your, your, your place of wonder should be, should be, uh, should be connected in your emotions. Wonder, like, why not? This is amazing, Lord.
So I've heard people say that, it, it is a spiritual book, we, we know that. But when you pick it up, should you pick it up like, okay, I'm opening up this spiritual book? Like, I'm opening it up, like, what am I gonna find? Like, oh my gosh, kind of, um, like, Kind of um like, be in expectation, reading in expectation, like, is that the way should we should posture ourselves to start reading?
Yes, we should expect a definition.
Expect a definition, expect to be explained, have something explained to us.
Amen. Good wo, good word. So we should open the Bible to, how did he say it?
Something to be explained to us.
He is a teacher. The good teacher. What does a teacher do?
Teaches.
Yeah, teaches what we don't know. When I go to school, I go to school to learn what I don't know. It, the teacher makes it easier. Books are not enough. Traffic lights are not enough. You have to have a cop, aura, aura, aura camera, right?
Huh, yeah.
You need to have a teacher. That's why Holy Spirit is here, teaching us.
Oh, wow.
Through, through me going to say, okay, I wanna learn, you're gonna teach me definition, Jesus. You're gonna define me what you are to me, what you teach me. You're filling up yourself with what he's teaching you.
So you're reading the word and then Holy Spirit is teaching you. It's like, because he is a being, he's teaching you.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you you, the, because when you, when you teach, you feel safe.
When you.
And you're taught, this is your brain, when you're taught, you you you're giving space for the Holy Spirit to add more into your body. Your body is a living temple of God. In order to fill him up, I need to learn what I don't know.
And that builds trust.
Yes, thoughts creates an emotion. Your emotions are training your five senses. Amen?
Amen. Thank you.
An emotion and a map. So, good job, good question, good question. Anyone else? Anyone else? Any questions?
So I I'm kind of new to this whole place. So Jackie, my question is, for the, for the wisdom community, is it like this? Or is?
I'll give a quick overview. So we meet every, every Tuesday morning at nine thirty. And the first thirty minutes is like this, where we hear from the community, what are, what are you processing? What's been your revelation? We have time for testimonies and it's like, like this, it's always very encouraging and hearing from one another's journeys helps understand things differently. And from Robbie, which is really good. And then at, then we shift into a teaching for about an hour that we, like what you experienced today. Robbie dives into deep revelation and homework because we all need to be challenged, right? So Robbie gives that challenge piece. And then um we have this, which is brand new, you guys are experiencing this new community platform. So there's places in there to chat and talk. And so we can hear from one another and testimonies. Um Corey often has, he's a really good in evangelizing and praying for people. He often has healing testimony. So just testimonies of different kinds where we're at in our journey. So that is what the community piece looks like. It's a place for us to grow and go deeper together. So I appreciate you asking that, you guys. Um I can see all of you are very hungry for fresh revelation to grow and it and as you're experiencing in these last few days, it's incredible. Like, we need that. We need that space where we have people who think like us, right? We might not have that in our community. But you're not alone, Matthew. There are people who think like you and can challenge you to think deeper and go further.
Yeah, I knew it was out there. I was like, this is amazing. I I wanna keep going, so I'm, I'm gonna do that. Yeah.
Wonderful. Well, I'm so happy. For all of you who are asking, can I join? Absolutely. Um and that was partly why we did this challenge in that time, because we wanted to make sure people coming in have availability in that time. So if you can make that Tuesday, nine thirty to eleven slot work for you. We would love for you to join us and be a part of this community. And it's just this, exactly what you experienced. Um you know, maybe more, because you go deeper in it and you get to know people and you get to love everyone. I love our Tuesday mornings because I get to connect with people and it's always fun to hear the testimonies because as we know biblically, testimonies are the spirit of prophecy. So as we testify, we're giving that hope to somebody else and then, and then we hear, oh, wow, I can do that, right? We grab it. So that is what we're about and um you know, part of a big reason why we do this hard reset and we put, some of you might have, how many of you found us from like Facebook or YouTube? Just curious. Yeah, okay. So that was partly why we do it, because we wanna catch the, the Matthews of the world who are like, I think I'm alone. No, I'm, I know I'm not alone, the people out there. So glad to know that that worked and we got in front of the right people. So that is definitely why we do this. We wanna welcome you into that community.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, everyone. Thanks, guys, so much.
Yeah, wonderful. And um as Robbie deep dived into, a little bit touched on, now you see the relevance, right? Like, I think sometimes we can hear like, oh, here's a meditation guide for you, and it has no meaning until you have this backdrop of, oh, that's why the meditation guide is key. So that's, that's on the, that's on the VIP platform for anyone who already registered for that. Um the first, um if you go in that, the learning platform, which I dropped a picture in there because I know it's new to everybody. To use that, use your portal to log in and that brings you to the platform. And then once you're in there, there's channels, which I double posted it, but at the very bottom, there's a tab that says learning. And then in there is the course. So that's where you can find your um meditation PDF. There's a guide, which it's really powerful. Robbie recently put this together. So if you haven't touched that yet, it's gonna be a great follow-up to what you just experienced. Download that meditation guide and start, uh what, you know, Robbie's talking about here, that there is step by step, like this is how you can do your practical um assessment on meditation. And it is designed to replace the fear and anxiety because we, whether you realize it or not, you are meditating. So you're either your meditation is on fear and worry or it's on the biblical part of it. So the meditation guide is to help you make that exchange out of fear and worry into biblical truth and application, right? Like, the truth is available, but I know when I'm in fear, I'm not applying God's word. So that meditation guide is to help you activate the truth of what God's word is, where it's real, right? Like, we can know something here, but until I'm living out of it here, it it doesn't feel real because it's not, right? So the meditation guide is to, as Robbie used the word repetition, is to bring that repetition to my thought. When I bring awareness, oh, actually, the awareness is my meditation isn't on the word of God, right? It's phase one. My meditation, but I want it to be, right? Then my awareness is, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna repeatedly think about this truth all day long. And then when I practice, and we all know that when we practice it over and over, suddenly it shifts from here to here and then I'm able to live out of that truth. So just an encouragement for you, make use of those resources, as we, as I said at the very beginning. The more you play with the revelation, the more you own it. So, you know, we're, we're ending um the, those that are not in the VIP, we're ending here, but your journey is just beginning. So continue on with the practical application and and put, 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 put your practices in place.
Well, thanks, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, thanks for the question. All right. Well, I think uh we already went way over time, so we're gonna end the session here and um those that are in the VIP will will, will move over to the other room. But I just wanna thank you guys from the bottom of my heart that you took a risk. I know it's always like a, a big moment to try something new. What are these people about? But I'm really grateful that you guys stepped into this and I feel so strongly, lots of connection from many of you already. And I don't, I noticed Abraham, your question, and we had a question from yesterday. So when we step into the next session, we'll answer um a bunch of those questions. But you guys are awesome and I look forward to, hope, hope to see you all next Tuesday. And I will, I definitely will get you all the links to the things that we talked about, what, lots of resources for you.
Oh, thank you so much. Appreciate you, yeah.
All right, bless you guys. Thank you so.